I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
The first item we have is public comment, and we have Ann Weston. Ann, if you could come up, please, and give your name and address for the record.
Ann Weston, 165 South Street. Good evening, thank you, Madam Chairman, good evening to the Board and to the Town Manager. I'm here tonight representing Keeping Auburn Warm. It's a nonprofit. I'm proud to let you know that it's been in existence for almost ten years now, and we're raising money for folks in Auburn who need help with fuel assistance. And you have an item on your agenda related to this evening where we were going to be seeking a one-day pouring license from you. However, due to the cost of the liquor liability policy, our President will be withdrawing that item when it comes up on your agenda. However, I did want to take this opportunity to promote the event with the kind permission of the Chairman. It will be a spaghetti and meatball and chicken and broccoli Alfredo dinner on Saturday, November 2nd at 5:30 PM, and it will be at the North American Martyrs Parish Hall. Here in town, the tickets are $10 per person, and children under 12 are $5. And there, like I said, there will be chicken and broccoli Alfredo, spaghetti and meatballs, salad, rolls, dessert. So we hope that all of you will have an opportunity to come and join us. And for tickets, you can call Mr. Page, the President of Keeping Auburn Warm, at 508-832-3581, or myself at 774-633-1123. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good luck with your event, Ann. And next, we have Darlene Coyle. There you are.
Good evening. Darlene Coyle from the Auburn Board of Health, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to let the Auburn residents know that we have upcoming flu clinics scheduled. We have a senior clinic scheduled for this Friday, October 18th. That's 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's going to be held at our Auburn Senior Center, and we strongly encourage our seniors and resident seniors to come and get vaccinated since it is early in the season. We will be having a general public clinic on Saturday, November 2nd, and that's going to be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Again, we're going to hold that at the Auburn Senior Center. So again, the clinics are free, free of charge. They are for Auburn residents, and the general clinic is going to be for ages 10 and up.
And what's the date on the general clinic, again?
The general clinic is going to be Saturday, November 2nd.
Thank you.
And that's going to be from 9:00 AM to noon, 12:00 PM.
Thank you.
I just wanted to encourage everybody to get vaccinated early.
Thank you. Mr. Stonian.
Is there anything that people are required to bring with them? Because I think in years past, don't they have to bring their, still bring their insurance card or something?
We do encourage them to bring their insurance card if they have one. If they don't have one, it's not a problem. The clinics are free. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item we have is AMF Bowling Centers, 101 Southridge Street, and we have a new officer-director change in beneficial interest. That hearing is scheduled for 7:05. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
(Inaudible).
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or voted? Is there anyone here tonight? Yes, if you could come up to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. Attorney Trish Farnsworth on behalf of AMF Auburn Lanes. This is, you know, an existing wine and malt restaurant license, and AMF was in bankruptcy, has emerged from bankruptcy with a plan of reorganization. So there are new officers and directors, and I've submitted the corporate organizational charts and all of the background information. But there should be no change whatsoever with the operation of the current license.
So with that, with understanding that there's no change, they're familiar with the license and the conditions of the license?
Yes, yes.
The existing operation?
It's actually still, the prior owners, I mean, there's a bunch of these, three actually, four in the Commonwealth, they have other licenses and understand. And there will be, you know, the manager, approved manager, and if there's any other changes, they would certainly come before you for approval of those.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Yes. As special condition of the license, when we granted it, we required that anyone that was drinking had a wristband, and I want to make sure that the current directors are aware of that when it gets transferred over, that they follow the same conditions so that they know who's of age, who should be drinking and purchasing and so on, and there's not someone at the table drinking that shouldn't be.
Correct. And I'll confirm that as well to remind them all, myself.
Are there any other board questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
(Inaudible).
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion on the request?
Make a motion, we approve the new officer-director, AMF Lanes on Southridge Street, a change in beneficial interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your time.
The next item we have is for Auburn Package Store, 196 Auburn Street, an alleged liquor license violation. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
(Inaudible).
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is open. Would anyone who expects to present any testimony in this case, please come forward and be sworn. If you can come forward, please. Are you going to speak to this item?
(Inaudible).
Do we have to wait for the attorney?
Where's the attorney coming from, sir?
(Inaudible).
I'm sorry?
From Lynn.
From Lynn?
Lynn.
Lynn.
(Inaudible).
It's going to be another 20 minutes.
Are you able to get ahold of him and let us know approximately how far out he is?
Yeah.
So is there a motion to recess the hearing for five minutes?
(Inaudible).
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to recess for five minutes, but if he's going to be lengthy, then we're going to have to move forward with the hearing. And it's too early for the Camden Drive street layout. Under Communications?
Motion to move up, item 5A and 5B.
Okay, we have a motion to move up.
Actually, let's do 5A first because 5B might take a little longer.
Okay.
Let's go with 5A.
Okay, so we have a motion to move up Agenda Item 5A, which is communication from the chief.
And the chief just.
That's okay, I can just read it.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So we have correspondence from the chief regarding trick-or-treat. I am recommending that the selectmen vote, as they do annually, to adopt the hours of 5:00 to 7:00 PM for trick-or-treating on Halloween of this year. If there are any questions, please let me know. Thank you, Chief Andy Sloukas. So the chief is recommending that we take a vote to adopt the hours of 5:00 to 7:00 PM as we do annually.
Motion to adopt the hours of 5:00 to 7:00 PM for trick-or-treating. It doesn't say what day it will. Is it actually on Halloween this year? On the 31st?
Yes, it says on Halloween.
October 31st.
Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
(Inaudible).
Make a motion if we move up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So we have, for the Fire Department, gift account and the amount of $25, an anonymous donation.
(Inaudible).
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? For the Police Department, the K-9 gift account, we have from, excuse me, Herbert Plumbing and Heating and the amount of $100. Is there a motion?
(Inaudible).
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? I just want to wait to check in with the chief, see if we know where we're at on the hearing.
(Inaudible).
So is there another item we can move up?
If you want, yeah. Motion to move up item 6A5.
6A5, there's a motion to move up a request for a proclamation. 6A5, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? We have in your packet a request for United Nations Association of Greater Boston requesting And they have actually included recommended language if the Board so chose to support this. Is there discussion?
As in years past, we've usually taken no action on this item, so I'm going to make a motion to do the same again this year.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion is to take no action on the proclamation, Agenda Item 65A. And because I believe they're withdrawing, is there a motion to move up 6A3?
(Inaudible).
Second?
Second.
This is for the one-day beer and wine license for Keeping Auburn Warm. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're just moving it up. Mr. Page, regarding the request for a one-day beer and wine license?
Yes, Wayne Page, 900 Common Road, President of Keeping Auburn Warm. We are withdrawing a one-day pouring license for beer and wine, and it's because there was a glitch in the insurance. It has nothing to do with the town, as I went to the DCG meeting and they were very helpful for the knowledge for next time we do it, if we do it, but it has nothing to do with them. This is our withdrawal, not anybody else's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Page. Let me just see if I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I just say one other thing. We are accepting sponsors for the Keeping Auburn Warm November 5th dinner, so if anybody wants to sponsorship the dinner, they can call either Ann or I and be sponsors 100, 150, and 200. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have to take any action on the one-day request? I'm just going to wait for a minute, give the attorney a moment to meet with his client, Is there a motion to reopen the hearing at 196 Auburn Street, the Auburn Package Store? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is reopened. Anyone who's expected to give testimony in this hearing today, please come forward. If you could raise your right hand, please.
Go forward and raise your right hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. So the license holder has been giving notification of this hearing. Do you acknowledge that you were properly notified of this hearing?
We acknowledge, we got a hearing, I noticed, correct.
Thank you.
It dated October 1st, so it was plenty of time.
Thank you. First, we'll hear from the police officers. Detective Sergeant Laurie?
On September 20th and September 21st of this year, between 4:00 and 8:00 PM, members of the liquor law enforcement unit in Auburn conducted undercover, an undercover compliance operation whereby we sent an 18-year-old male into all establishments sell alcohol to the public. I'm happy to report that everyone did comply with mass general laws and our bylaws except for one business, which was the Auburn Package Store, 196 Auburn Street. And on September 20th, basically at 4:24 in the evening, that underage 18-year-old male was sent into that store at my direction. He was instructed to attempt to purchase a six-pack of Bud Light beer. He entered the store and then minutes later exited with a six-pack of Bud Light beer and handed to this lieutenant where I secured it in my cruiser. He described the attendant as an Indian or Middle Eastern male, Middle Eastern descent, thin build, dark hair, in his 40s. He was the only attendant on duty behind the front of the counter, and that would be the evidence before you this evening.
Does the attorney or the license holder have any questions specifically to the law enforcement officer who just gave testimony regarding the facts?
I do. First of all, Madam Chair, Joe Devlin from the Demarcus Law Office is in Lynn, Massachusetts, and I apologize for holding up the public hearing. We have not seen a copy of the police report yet, so just some, officer, I apologize if it's in the police report, but do you have your own sting guidelines here in Auburn?
Yes.
And they're written guidelines?
They're written guidelines. They were read to the minor. He also read them and signed them, and all guidelines that are in place were adhered to during this sting operation.
Did the minor have any ID on him?
No.
Was the minor instructed not to speak to the attendant?
No.
Was, in your guidelines, is the minor allowed to?
If the minor's asked any questions, he's to provide correct answers. For instance, if he's asked for his date of birth, he's to advise them that what his correct date of birth is. Basically, this is advertised in the media prior to this sting, which this was. We play very fair, and in a nutshell, in this case, he walked up to the counter, he presented it, the alcohol, to the attendant, the attendant rang up the order, and the minor left after paying for the alcohol.
Okay, thank you. And that's all the questions I have.
Okay. I'm sorry. And did you want to make a statement or present any facts on behalf of your client?
Yes, please. With me is Krishna Patel, who's the manager of record. He's also all of the officers and director and a 90% shareholder. Also in the audience is his brother, Govine Patel, who's a 10% shareholder. On the day in question, everybody that was there is, or everybody that works for him is tip-certified. The cashier was Govine and Krishna's, or Krishna's brother-in-law, his wife's brother. He's tip-certified, he's experienced in the liquor industry. He doesn't specifically remember, but he remembers carding some people and not carding They talked with the employees after the incident and reiterated the importance of IDing. I mean, their main goal now is to make sure that this doesn't happen again, not to fight the charges. They stopped short of making an automatic rule that if you get caught in a sting again, we're going to fire you. They're two family men, they're loyal, you know, they believe that people make mistakes, but they did make it clear it's a possibility. They have increased the apparent age for IDing at their store to 45, so that it's very hard, you know, 40 and up is an age, it's very hard to not, if you look that old, to not be over 21. So they've instructed everybody, and they're going to do it too, everybody who's 40, looks 45 and younger is going to get carded. They are going to review the videotape from the prior shift every morning, and they're going to talk to their employees about what they did or did not do wrong in that shift, and they've already told them, you'll have warnings if you don't card somebody who looks under 45 in that video, and that can lead to termination. They are reminding them all at the beginning of every shift that the importance of IDing, and that if there's a big line, it's not bad customer service not to follow the, you know, the proper procedure and follow the law. They're going to discuss staffing with their employees, because there are times that there is an employee there and they are not. If it's too busy, they'll get somebody else on that shift. They're increasing signage, or they've increased signage behind the register about the apparent age and about IDing and about the date of birth, what's the proper date of birth, you know, for that day. And the biggest thing that they're going to do, which is going to be an expense of some money, is they're going to have private compliance checks in the next year, two to three, and they're going to tell their employees ahead of time, if you fail one, it's a warning; if you fail the second one, you can be terminated. So it's in those hopes that they can make sure that this doesn't happen again. Mr. Patel, Krishna Patel is here to answer any questions you may have, and, you know, we hope the Board will take that in the steps that they're taking into consideration when you're determining their punishment.
Okay, thank you. Chief Sloukas, Lieutenant Laurie, do you have any questions for the licensee?
I do not. I do not, but I just would like the record to reflect that shortly thereafter, I went to the business and I spoke to Mr. Patel, and it's great that he's going to implement all these changes, but it appears from our conversation that Mr. Patel was the person that actually sold to the minor, not an employee of his. So as long as he's willing to make those improvements, then we shouldn't have any further issues.
Okay. Do board members have questions? So I guess in light of what the chief just said, who actually sold the alcohol to the underage?
It was my brother-in-law, actually. He was helping us that day.
It was your brother-in-law, and is he part owner?
No, he's not. But he was, we were like, you know, cleaning and restocking in the basement and all that, and he happened to just be, you know, at the counter and waited on. But he also tip-certified. He works in Clint and the other convenience store where they have beer and wine.
So do you recall the discussion that the chief just mentioned?
I'm sorry?
Do you recall the discussion that the chief just mentioned he had with you?
Do you remember talking to the police chief?
Yeah. When I called on the phone.
Chief, did you say you went into the store or you had to tell? So the chief went into your place of business the day after?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you recall having a conversation with him?
Yeah, I remember that.
And did you tell him you were the one who sold the alcohol?
No, I wasn't sure who was it. I was asking the time that day, but somebody said that was me, but when I look at the time, that 4:20, Friday, it was my brother-in-law was there.
They went back and looked at the video after finding out.
Which is, I still have it too, I think.
And found out.
And I asked him to.
I can't hear both of you at the same time.
I asked him to, like, which product that he bought, and I checked in the tape, like, you know, it was, and the described, the person they described, I checked in the tape too, and it happened to be my brother-in-law.
And Lieutenant Laurie, were you able to confirm that?
I was there during the conversation, and I, basically, I asked him to check the videotape because he did make mention, because I said that he fit the description of the individual that sold according to the 18-year-old minor. So I asked him to check the tapes, so I did not check them, though.
Okay. And how many employees do you have selling behind the counter?
I have two right now.
Two?
Yeah.
Two employees and yourself?
In my.
So there are three who sell?
Mm-hmm. Before, I had three, but one of them just left not too long ago.
So I'll just, I mean, I can't tell you, you have to do this, but we've had other license holders who have been in for violations, and we've also had other license holders who have never been in for a violation. And the license holders who never have a violation make it a policy and a practice to card everyone. And, you know, I've seen it where, you know, an 80-year-old gentleman was made to go back out to the car to get his ID because that's their policy. They just card everyone, and if you card everyone, you're not going to risk selling to an underage.
Yeah, even though like, every day, when I go home, I tell, like, when I, you know, when I leave, I said one thing, like, make sure you card everybody.
Yeah, because 45, 45 is a good idea, but everyone is better.
Okay, I can go that way.
Are there any questions from the Board? Mr. Grossman?
How long have you been in ownership of Auburn?
It's one year, almost.
It's almost a year?
Yeah.
And the past year, you haven't had any other sting violations?
No.
Were there any other stings conducted in that year?
Not under this current ownership, no.
Okay, thank you. So there wouldn't have been an opportunity. This is the first sting?
First attempt, first failure.
This is the first sting that's done, been done under this ownership, and they failed their first sting?
That would be correct, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Did you have anything else to add before we close the hearing? Did you have an?
No.
Did you have anything else to add before we close the hearing?
If the Board finds that there's a violation, I'd be having to make a recommendation with respect to that license if you want.
So if, in fact, the Board does find that there was a violation, I will ask the chief if he has a recommendation. Does anyone in the public have anything? No. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
(Inaudible).
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the alleged violation of the license? And it would have to be specific to a date and time. The Police Department alleges that it happened on September 20th at 4:24 PM. Is there a motion of finding, if there's a finding that there a violation occurred?
Well, I don't think that he disputed.
We still have to make a motion to find that a violation occurred?
Motion to find that violation did occur on September 20th at?
Yes.
4:40?
4:24.
4:24?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion that they've been filing to violate their license on September 20th at 4:24 PM? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So now we'll move forward with the appropriate penalty in your packet. You have the Board's policy and recommended penalties, but first I'll turn to the chief and ask the chief if he has a recommendation.
I'd recommend a one-day suspension during the week, and I believe for the first offense, the Board's policy has been to allow the business owner to pick which day they would prefer to serve the suspension.
And that's your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion, monks aboard, for a penalty?
If we may, to open the door and just whenever time, I think it should be recorded and let, make this Board aware of what day it's going to be so that there's not just.
Yes, they would have to make a decision right now.
Yeah, it would have to be right now. So is it, so first, is there a motion on?
I'm with a motion for a one-day suspension to be served on on Monday through Thursday with the owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second to recommend a suspension next week between Monday and Thursday, and, you know, the business owner may wish to have a specific day, may not be as busy as another, but we would have to know right now or the Board will choose the day.
Monday, the 21st?
So is there a motion to, for the one-day suspension? So is there a motion to, for the one-day suspension to occur on Monday, the twenty-first?
Second.
Twenty-first it is.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. So your, your license is suspended for one day on October twenty-first and it will be posted on the outs, on your door, the reason that you're closed, that you're in violation of your license and you, you are serving a one-day suspension. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Madam Chair, if I may just while we're here.
Yes.
I wanted to let the board know and everyone else know that we, uh, we were awarded a four thousand dollar grant from, uh, the Executive Office of Public Safety today in order to combat underage drinking in Auburn. So, uh, as you know, as, as he alluded to, we don't deal from the bottom of the deck and we're gonna be, um, utilizing those funds, uh, between now and whatever period of time that takes to, to expend those.
Congratulations on being awarded that grant and, and, uh, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, I apologize for the tardiness.
Thank you, sir.
Back to our agenda, we have the Camden Drive Street Layout Hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed, the hearing is open. And I believe Mr. Bernie is going to be heard on this. Mr. Bernie, the Camden Drive Street Layout Hearing?
Um, we received, or I believe the board received a letter from, uh, Mr. Jeff Bossclaire over the summer requesting, uh, acceptance of Camden Drive as a public street. Uh, the planning board has been working with Mr. Bossclaire to close out his subdivision through their process. Uh, at their meeting of October eighth, they voted to send the letter that, uh, I believe you've received as part of your packet. Uh, if not, it's what Ms. Jacobson is handing out right now. Um, and that essentially says that the board is in favor of the Board of Select moving forward, laying the street out, but that Mr. Bossclaire has some outstanding, um, mostly minor issues, uh, that need to be cleaned up prior to town meeting so that they can discharge the subdivision and move ahead with the acceptance process. Uh, essentially, the board felt that it was fair to Mr. Bossclaire to move forward with the layout hearing, uh, as tonight would be the only opportunity to do so. Um, the board meets, uh, one week from tonight and my understanding is that the items that remain, Mr. Bossclaire will be able to clean up, uh, at that point, which will afford, um, the ability for the board to release the tri-party agreement and move forward with the, the town meeting warrant article.
Okay. So, um, just so we're clear on what, what was just handed to us in our packet, and you may or may not be familiar with this, there's, um, a letter dated August nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, where it lists nineteen outstanding issues and it's signed by Joanna Paquin. Are you saying that this letter that was just handed to the board dated October fifteenth is now, um, the, the letter that covers any outstanding issues or?
Yes, it, it outlines any remaining issues that, that Mr. Bossclaire would have to, to finish, finalize, pardon me.
So I just wanna be clear that these nineteen issues have been addressed with the exception of what's left on this letter?
They've been condensed into the five bullet items that you have in front of you.
All right, thanks.
And again, they represent fairly minor items that should not take more than, uh, the seven days for him to, to be able to wrap up.
And if, um, if this board votes to accept the street layout, then this information, if it were still outstanding, would go to town meeting members before they were to take a vote?
Uh, quite honestly, if this, I don't, if these items are still outstanding at the planning board meeting next week, um, my recommendation to the board would be that they pull their warrant article, uh, because for town meeting to accept a street layout or to accept a road without discharging the tri-party agreement, in my opinion, uh, puts the town at risk. Um, that may be, there may be differing opinions on that. Uh, I know that in the past, town meeting has accepted roads with conditions, uh, and uh, I know that I have personally dealt with at least two roads that were accepted, uh, somewhere in the twenty to forty years ago that, uh, still have not had the condition satisfied. Um, so that only raises my concern about forwarding a, an unfinished or undischarged subdivision to town meeting. But again, I think that laying the street out i- is, is the most reasonable thing to do. Um, the, the acceptance of the layout, uh, has no impact or the items on the list have no impact on the acceptance of the layout. And if, for whatever reason, the article were pulled for October, it would be a matter of just replacing the article in the spring and I, I can't imagine that there wouldn't be the ability to finalize for, for the annual.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
Uh, through the chair. Uh, Adam, I've spoken to a couple of different residents on Camden and, um, they would like to have sewer attached to their homes. In some cases, uh, well, they're not being able to do that because of the location of the sewer pipe is unknown. And, um, speaking with them, they weren't sure if that was ever gonna be able to be found easily. It sounds like that's gonna be quite a project to find out where that sewer line is and where they can actually make a leach to the individual residences.
And these are residents on Camden Drive?
At, at the corner of Brook.
Okay, so, um, the fourth bullet item on this list indicates that on the as-built plan, Mr. Bossclaire will need to indicate the true location of the sewer he installed on Brook Street and on Camden Drive. So that should provide the sewer department the location and they should be then able to work with those homeowners in order to, to make a connection per their requirements.
And you're saying that that will be done, uh, by the planning board hearing and if not, then you were going to recommend that, uh?
Yes.
This get postponed indefinitely?
Correct. The, the location of the sewer that was installed as part of the subdivision should be on the as-built plans. It's work that was done in a public way and it's, it's only reasonable that, that that information is provided to the town.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Just like to, just like to make a motion that we postpone until such time that, that things are rectified till the planning board sees to it that they've all been taken care of and the agreement is met. Otherwise, we hold out for approval of this thing.
I'll, I'll second for discussion.
Although, we have a motion and a second to take, was it to take no action?
Correct.
Post, postpone until the planning board? Um, okay, so, and we have a motion and a second, um, under discussion, Mr. Simoni in first and then Mr. Bernie.
Well, um, before I ask, I guess, I, I second for discussion because I, Mr. Grossman obviously has reason for wanting to pull, so I just wanna kinda hear his logic on this. I'm not saying I disagree, I just wanna.
It's, it's not complete and it's not ready for acceptance to go for the town meeting. Until it is, I don't think we should be voting on passing it forward.
Fair enough. I, um, so I guess my only other question then would be is, I, I understand your recommendation. This agreement, the, the agreement that, the tri-party agreement that is between Mr. Bossclaire, the town and?
And the bank.
And the bank. So essentially, what, what I'm gathering from the discussion we just had, all of these conditions are requirements of us releasing, the town releasing?
Correct. The, the planning?
And accepting. So I, I, then I'm, I'm fine with, um, with the motion.
As, discussion on the motion, Mrs., Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, the reason that the board sent the letter and made the recommendation that the layout hearing be allowed to proceed is if this layout hearing doesn't occur this evening, there's no opportunity for it to be accepted at the town meeting in October. Um, because there's a requirement that the layout hearing be held a minimum of seven days, I'm sorry, yeah, a minimum of seven days prior to town meeting. So unless the board were holding a special meeting on the twenty-second, this would, not laying the, the road out this evening would automatically push it into the spring. The board felt that Mr. Bossclaire had made an effort over the summer, uh, and into the fall to comply with the requirements of his subdivision and they felt that, uh, the town accepting the road, uh, prior to winter would be in the best interest of the residents of the road and of the town plowing it, uh, et cetera. Um, if the town does not accept it, legally, Mr. Bossclaire is required or responsible for the plowing of the road. Uh, and I know that in the past, he's mentioned that some residents, uh, are unhappy with when he decides to plow it. They feel it should be plowed, uh, at an earlier stage of snowfall. So, uh, the board was looking at, uh, working with Mr. Bossclaire to remove that hardship from him. That may or may not weigh into your decision to lay out the road. Uh, the laying out of the road does not deem acceptance. Um, town meeting is the final body that does that, so that was the, the board's other feeling was that going forward tonight still leaves a check and balance and still gives the town the opportunity to prevent the takeover in, in event of, of some items not being completed. Uh, and again, I have my own feelings that, that aren't necessarily germane to the argument because the board has made their decision.
So, um, if I can just ask you a couple of questions, when, when will the planning board be looking at this?
Uh, I believe that the letter was written today by Mr. Coyle. Uh, I believe over the next several days, Mr. Bossclaire has indicated he looks, he's gonna look to, uh, tie up the loose ends, uh, between himself, Mr. Coyle, uh, and his engineer. And the board has a meeting with Mr. Bossclaire on the agenda for Tuesday, the twenty-second.
Tuesday, the twenty-second?
That is correct.
That's the planning board?
Yes, it is.
And? And if, um, if this board doesn't take action tonight, it won't be put on town meeting till at least next spring?
Correct.
And tonight, we're not, the, the action, the board, just for the record, um, we're not, we're not approving the acceptance of the street, we're approving the layout.
Correct.
Any acceptance, the acceptance of the street is conditional on meeting the existing requirements.
Correct, and, and town meeting has to take their own action for acceptance. The layout hearing, uh, what you're accepting is the meets and bounds of the right-of-way essentially. You're saying that what's laid out on the subdivision plan as the right-of-way, which is the road, the driving surface, the curbs, the grass strips, the sidewalks and any pertinent grass strips to that are amenable and acceptable to the town as, as the right-of-way.
Okay. Um, well, let me, I, I'd like to hear from Mr. Coyle, um, on some issues that you just raised, then we'll hear.
Before.
Adam isn't, isn't going anywhere.
Just, yeah.
Go ahead.
So essentially, essentially he has one, one week.
Correct.
Roughly, to, to rectify these five bullet items.
Correct.
And understanding what you said, the recommendation would come from the planning board meeting if these weren't, if, if these five bullets were not rectified by the twenty-second, by the planning board meeting, then it would be the recommendation of the planning board not to, to town meeting, not to accept the road.
Yes, the planning board is the petitioner on road acceptance articles for subdivision. So as the petitioner, they reserve the right to withdraw their petition up into town meeting.
Understood.
And, and, and you're correct, they, they would, they would be recommending that it be withdrawn and, and voted to be indefinitely continued. Or if not withdrawn, indefinitely continued.
Right. I'm gonna, based on that discussion, I'm gonna withdraw my second on the motion because I think we should let the planning board do their job. And if, we're, we're not voting to accept the street, we're just voting to accept the layout. Planning board is, if, if these, I, you know, I, we have to have faith in them that if, if these bullet items, and that's what they're called, if these board items are not done, it would be their recommendation to town meeting not to, um, not to, not to approve the street layout. Or, I mean, I guess we could vote on the motion, uh, that's on the table.
Well, I, I, I mean, if you wouldn't mind holding the withdrawal, I, I had asked to hear from Mr. Coyle, 'cause at this point, I'm not in, I can't, I, I don't believe that I could support this motion either. I mean, I, I don't think we need to hold it, but I would like to hear from Mr. Coyle as to some of the comments that, um, Mr. Bernie made. I mean, I don't wanna see these, um, residents go through the winter without having, um, adequate plowing and sanding. I, I understand these issues and we, I don't know if there's anyone here, um, but if we have any residents, I also wanna hear from them. So we're still under discussion on the original motion. Okay. Mr. Coyle, please.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board and Julie, um, I've worked closely with Jeff Bossclaire over the past year, um, for him to address several comments that we've had. He has addressed the vast majority of them. Um, there still remains five items that we did another inspection today. He has assured me that he can get these items addressed by next Tuesday. Um, based on the scope of the work required, I believe that he can. So I, I would feel comfortable if, if the board did accept the layout and then move forward through the process. And again, as I think was previously mentioned, if he doesn't get these items addressed, uh, then the board just won't recommend approval. So I think we do have a system in place that will allow us not to, obviously to accept this road if these comments aren't addressed. But again, we've worked closely with him and he has, uh, moved forward on all the items and it just has these five remaining items.
Does anyone, uh, Mr. Holstrom?
Uh, through the chair. Bill, I think I got some concerns and I can see Real Drive and Wentworth Drive coming back at us again because of some of the issues here with the water. They said they have submitted hydrology calculations for that area. Um, it says for the hundred-year storms and it seems as though lately we've been having ten-year storms. Uh, they've been a little bit more frequent and, uh, if this isn't calculated properly and the, uh, the land developed properly, I can see, uh, you know, the town coming back and it's gonna cost us money to take care of the, the drainage and the, the road if it's undermined.
Sure, we've reviewed the, um, the design and the construction plans as approved by the planning board and, uh, we're working with their engineer who is currently evaluating the different storm events. Uh, we do feel confident that within the week's timeframe, we'll have the information necessary to wrap up these final items.
Just as a follow-up, um, if these are wrapped up and done properly, is there any recourse if any damage comes because of, uh, what we have here in front of us? And, yeah, it sounds like, uh, it's been taken care of, but that storm's gonna come through and it, uh, well, it's, the town's gonna, it's gonna cost the town some money to get the repairs done. So have we got a recourse to go back to him and say, look at, you know what, your calculations were off and we have a problem here, so it's gonna cost us money?
Well, you could always go against the, uh, after the engineer who stamps the plans ultimately, who does the calculations. Um, so I mean, there's, there's always recourse through that, that avenue. But at this point, what, what we're looking at is making sure that they, they build the, uh, project, the subdivision in accordance to the plans. And if by chance there was some issue in a hundred-year flood that occurred and, um, the detention pond didn't function as designed, uh, there would always be recourse towards the engineer who stamps the plans through their errors and omissions policy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Simoni, then Mr. Grossman.
Um, that last statement, I guess, kinda scares me. It seems like crap shoot. Wouldn't, that would involve a legal battle between us and the engineer that stamped the plans if we had to go that route. I, I mean, I, I just, we, we just, we just had a street, I think within the last two years, um, that had issues going back to the late seventies, if I remember, um, right?
Sure.
That we had to address. And I, and, and that's, I mean, that's a very valid point that Mr. Bernie raised is, you know, we've, we've accepted some of these in the past, they're a nice guy and, you know, we, everything, you know, gave us our word, we're gonna do this and we wound up having to jump through hoops later. I mean, I, I understand what, what you're saying. I don't know Mr. Bossclaire and I'm, I'm sure he will address, you know, or make a good attempt to address these, so I'll go back to my, my previous statement. I, I would hate to see the residents also have to suffer through the winter if he was responsible for doing the plowing, but I'd also hate to see them suffer. But I'd also hate to see them suffer if there was an aftermath of things that didn't get done properly and then they had to deal with construction and other things to rectify some things in the meantime. So, my statement I previously made, I'm willing to let the planning board do their job, support the layout, accepting the layout here tonight, and leave it up to the planning board to see that this is done and make that recommendation, if it's not next week, to town meeting, not to approve this and wait until the spring to make sure that it's done properly. I mean, as I said, we have a planning board for a reason. I'm absolutely in favor of letting them do what they're tasked to do, what they're responsible for, and we have to have faith that they will do that.
Sure. Again, through the chair, their engineer is going through the calculations. We're reviewing them. I feel comfortable that when that work is completed, it'll give them sufficient time to address these issues by Tuesday. If they don't address them, then we just don't move forward.
Fair enough, I think.
And I just want to say, the motion is to postpone until after the planning board take action, which would be October 21st, which is just too late to get it on this town meeting. I believe, and I would have to go back and look at the vote, I believe that this board voted to defer to the petitioner on this item. If, if, if in fact, they don't meet all of these requirements, I'd like this board to consider if we support the street layout, to reconsider our motion on the article. And, you know, I would then ask for a motion to not accept the street layout if they haven't met it. And it'll just be in unity with the planning board that we won't support the street layout. The planning board doesn't support the street layout and hopefully, town meeting will, I mean, street acceptance, and hopefully, town meeting will not accept it as well. So, we still have an opportunity to ask that the street not be accepted. So, before, is there any public comment on this? No? Thought you were all here for Camden Drive. We'll soon know what you're here for. So, the motion is to postpone until after the planning board meeting. And there's a second. Is there any further discussion on?
Point of order, I think Mr. Simoni would pull his second.
He withdrew that for discussion.
Yeah. So, if, I mean, if we want to vote on the motion that's on the table, that's fine. But I'm just, you know, I, Mr. Grossman has valid reasons, but I agree with the point the chair made, so I'm not going to support the motion even though I seconded it.
Yeah. And I'm not going to support the motion. I think that our task here tonight is to schedule the layout hearing and support the layout of the street. And hopefully, the planning board, through communications with Mr. Bernie and Mr. Coyle, will do what they need to do. And if they feel that these weren't met and they withdraw the article, it's a moot point anyway. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, Mr. Grossman?
It's not only this case, but it's any street needs to be accepted by the planning board. Even though we accept it for layout, it still has to go through the planning board before it goes to town meeting. Mr. Bosclaire had plenty of time to accomplish these five bullet points long before, you know, us being at point, at ground zero to accept it. And we're making an acceptance to our general principles of vote by passing it on and moving the date and allowing the planning board to vote, which they are, that's their right because it's their article. And we're bypassing ours by not taking our position.
Any other comments? All those in favor of Mr. Grossman's motion? All those in favor of delaying till after the planning board meeting? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Is there a motion to close the hearing? After we close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor closing the hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion regarding the layout?
Motion to accept the layout of Camden Drive as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Simoni?
Yes. I, Mr. Grossman has a valid point. And I think, I think he makes, he makes a very good point there. And it's tough for me not to support that because I do think that, I do think he's right. There were plenty of time. But we have the planning board. I have faith in them that, you know, if this isn't ready, it won't be accepted. But I think that Mr. Grossman's comments are very valid. And I think going forward, you know, we shouldn't be waiting until zero hour to get, you know, we're up against it to have stuff like this. You know, I don't want to make light of this, but my first grade teacher always said, "First done, worst done." If you're rushing to get something done, something's going to be missed. That's what bothers me. Again, I have the faith in the planning board that this will get done properly. But Mr. Grossman made a great point.
And we may want to send a communication to the planning board, just kind of outlining our expectations before something is sent to, you know, something is sent to us for a street layout hearing. But that would be on a future agenda.
I think that's fair.
So, we have a motion and a second to accept the street layout. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Grossman is opposed. Back to our agenda, we have AMF done, Auburn Packet Store, Camden. Under Communications, we handle the chief. In your packet, you have a citizen's petition in opposition of the wind turbine. It is signed by 39 town members who object to the installation of a wind turbine on Prospect Street. The petition is presented to the Board of Selectmen and have brought it to our attention. So, it is, "The people of Coachman Lane, Oxford Street South, and the surrounding area do not want a term, a wind turbine in this area. We have enough noise from Route 395, the train on Cedar Street, and speeding cars on Oxford Street South." And it is signed and presented to this board with 40 signatures. And I'm guessing somebody in the audience is here to speak to this. I just want to make this board aware that there's no action before this board regarding the wind turbine. And there is no action before town meeting regarding the wind turbine. So, while I appreciate the petition coming to us, my recommendation to anyone, and I'm guessing that you're here to speak to this, would be to also present your concerns to the Wind Turbine and Alternate Energy Committee. But is there someone here who wants to be heard on this? Are you here for the wind turbine and alt, I mean, the petition? Thank you. If you could just give your name and address to the record, please?
My name is Mark DeRuscher. I live at 15 Coachman Lane in Auburn. I think the problem we're having, Madam Chairman, is that we're not aware of any findings that this group has done. We don't know what studies they've done, if they've done them yet, what the noise requirements are. I spent over 43 years as a professional engineer, okay, power engineer for Verizon. We studied wind turbines. We studied all sorts of alternative energy sources. We found that wind turbines don't always give you the best bang for your buck, just like solar doesn't always give you the best bang for your buck. Depends on where you are, what your locations are. The noise levels, we're not sure what the noise levels are. Has a study been done? Have they published the information for these studies? We haven't seen anything. So, we're full of questions. Do we want it in our backyard? NIMBY happens everywhere, okay? Everybody complains about not enough jails, but they don't want them in their backyard. We complain about diminishing resources, but we don't want windmills or solar farms in our backyard. Not that we don't want them, we want to know what it is that they're going to do for us or against us. We don't know what kind of noise they're going to generate. We don't know how far out that noise is going to proliferate. We don't know if there's enough wind up there to make it run properly, to make it feasible. We don't know what the storage capacity is going to be built online to store that power in order to transmit it back to New England Power Grid. What is our take from that? What do we get for it? How much is it going to cost to put this in? How much is it going to cost to do the survey? We spent millions of dollars looking at all sorts of different sites for the high school and ended up putting it right back on the same location it was. The reason they wanted the new high school is because it was taking fumes in from 290, yet we put the new high school in the same building. Doesn't make sense. We don't want to see that happen again. We want information and we want it presented to us in a timely manner so we can answer and discuss this. We have nothing to discuss if we don't know what the results are.
Okay. I can either ask Mr. Bernie now to give us a status update on the project unless there are other residents who also want to be heard, ask some questions, and then we can, and Mr. Bernie, you're welcome to come up here because this may come up to the table. This may, this may generate some conversation here. Are there any other residents who want to be heard or put on the record? If you could come up and give your name and address for the record, please? And Mr. Bernie will give us a status update on the project and then hopefully, give you some information as to where to go to get some of this information.
My name is Frances Sutherland, and I live at 750 Oxford Street South. And my concern was that anything that has been in the paper, and I realize, you know, it's subjective to whoever writes it, has indicated that this is going to be on Prospect Street on Prospect Hill. It's not. It's on Oxford Street South. And the comment that the closest house was 1,200 feet away is not, that house is not on Prospect Street, it's on Oxford South. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's right to put something that's going to make that kind of noise in a residential area.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Through the chair.
Yep. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Plutukas?
Please, I want to sit in the state forest.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. I think I have someone getting up.
Curry.
Good evening. If you could just give your.
I'm a free lender.
Yep.
I took the petition and a lot of people don't want this wind turbine, including myself. What they're going to put is right up the hill from us, on Prospect Street. And we feel there's going to be a lot of noise and a lot of problems. And this is something we're trying to avoid.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else before I hear from Mr. Bernie? Mr. Bernie, if you, so the residents have concerns that they haven't been, had access to information and haven't been updated. And, you know, and I have to say, I've looked at the map and I see the circle and where Oxford Street South is and the homes are in the proximity of, so if you could just give us an update, please.
Sure. The wind turbine committee was given a grant or was awarded a grant by the Mass CEC for $85,000 to do a feasibility study, which answers a lot of the questions that were asked. The functionality, we did a 12-plus month Met Tower Study where there's actually, and I believe it's still up there, a meteorological tower that has a series of anemometers and measures wind speed and all of the other factors that go into the function of the wind turbine. That data was collected and analyzed using contemporary modeling software to model it up to the heights of where the wind turbine will actually be. It does show that we have enough wind to power an 850-kilowatt turbine, which is a little bit larger than the one that's at Holy Name. And this is all in the report. The report is on the website. It was presented to the Board of Selectmen, I believe, in August. I believe you can access that video on YouTube if you go to the town's website and go to the cable.
Report on the website?
The report is on the website.
I'm sorry.
On the Planning Division.
If you have questions, if you could just come up to the microphone so that those at home can hear you.
The report is very extensive. It's about 175 pages long. Again, we had our consultant come out and give an overview of the report. Additionally, to answer some of the noise questions, we applied in August for an acoustic study specifically to study the noise impacts of the turbine, not only on the site, but on the surrounding areas. That, we have not heard back from the CEC. It's in process. I expect that by the end of the year, we'll hear whether or not we were awarded. My understanding is that if you have a positive feasibility study, they generally will award that grant. So, we'll be doing the acoustic study to verify what the specific noise impact may be. According to the feasibility study, which had a very general and broad brush noise assessment, there would be some limited impacts. The study that was done does not take into account foliage cover, topography, or ambient noise. It would be as if the turbine were operating in a vacuum.
How about harmonics? Would they, would they take harmonics into consideration?
That's something that will be done as part of the acoustic study if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. I'd have to look at that.
In response to the town meeting, we don't all get the town channel because some of us don't have chatter.
No, what I, my reference to town meeting was, there's no, there's no action before town meeting regarding.
Okay.
The wind turbine. So, there's no formal action either before this board or town meeting to move forward with the, with the.
All right. Well, again, the petition was presented to me and because I had no knowledge, I hadn't heard anything. I don't read the newspaper. I prefer to get my information at other locations. And I didn't see a lot on there. I signed it because I had some questions. As a professional, I have some questions on what's going on. And I just want answers. And if I know there's a location now, the website, if you can give me the website after, I'd appreciate that so I can go through the report. And then I can either support or oppose the study.
Yeah, no, I'm, no, I absolutely understand and appreciate the fact that you've brought this petition and asked this board, you know, for some information. I just wanted you and anyone else who may have signed this petition to know that there's no, there's no.
I realize there's no ongoing.
There's no, there's no formal action that we'll be taking right now. And even to this board, we've received several packets recently. Information on wind turbines comes in daily. You know, we read something in the newspaper, we hear something in the news. You know, there are residents who provide us with information. And information that we may have had three years ago or four years ago, there may be some new facts. So, it's good to get the information out of there. And we're getting new information all the time. But I, and I would hope that if any formal action was, were to be taken. That you would be notified.
And we're just asking that any information, if there is any new information that they come with, be publicized so we can go on and take a look at it. I mean, they could change the design of the blade, okay? I've seen wind turbines where the blades don't go around like this, they go around like this. And they're very efficient, but they also make noise. I need to know that. I need to know what the DB rating is. I need to know what the harmonics are going to be. Because you can hear a diesel engine with your body and not your ear because of the harmonics. The low harmonics is that hum that you hear in the background, and that can drive people crazy. I remember doing an audible study in the town of Auburn here at the phone company up on Central Street because a neighbor was complaining about the noise levels from our generator. When our generator operated, it actually reduced the ambient noise from the Mass Pike in 290. It was the harmonic noise that she was hearing. And there's nothing you can do about harmonic noise. And there's nothing you can do about harmonic noise.
So this petition was presented to us, you know, by the Freelanders. And I would have used them as a contact person. And I don't know if, for informational purposes... Because I was going to ask Mr. Bernie to provide the Freelanders the information so that you could pass it on to the rest of the petitioners, signers. But certainly, if you... I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you wanna be the contact person, I'm sure Mr. Bernie would be willing to sit down with you and give you all any information that they have and where to access it so that all of these residents, Mr. Bernie, have all of this information.
Sure.
That would be fine. I don't think Barry would mind taking over his position.
Yeah. And I mean, you know, it's probably easier accessed online. It's, you know, hundreds of pages.
175.
175 pages of information. But I'm sure as butters and residents, you'll wanna look at the entire report.
Yes, I would.
So, Mr. Bernie, could you please just make it a point to any resident who's looking...
I'll speak with them after we finish this up. I wanted to touch on two more quick points that were brought up.
Okay. Two points from Mr. Bernie and then the chairman of the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee is here as well. So he'll be coming up in a minute. And you may want to... You may have questions for him and may want to attend one of his meetings. Mr. Bernie?
You had questions about the grid's ability to store it. Under the Green Communities Act, they're now required to allow interconnection as long as they have a facility that adequately will untake the power. The proposal is to hook into the grid at Route 20 where they have three-phase power. That's all in the study. They can't limit the amount that they take. And what essentially would happen is it would be a net meter of credit for the town. So town facilities would... For all the energy that's created, town facilities would get a... It would essentially roll their meters back. So it would be... If we create 100 kilowatt hours one day, 100 kilowatt hours would, say, come off a town hall's meter.
Well, we would... And again, this probably has to go back to the committee, but would you get that off of a meter that was on the machine? Or would you get that off on a meter that was at the transfer point to New England Grid?
There's a meter at the transfer point to the grid, and that counts what we're creating at that point. And so that's running backwards. And so while the meter at Town Hall runs forward, when we do the bill, they just reconcile that on the bill. So we get one bill that's negative, one bill that's positive. They do a reconciliation and then we pay the difference. And in the report, the estimated cost for design construction is about $2.9 million. And that is a payback period between seven and 10 years based on actual output.
And maintenance charges and...
That's all built into the budget.
That's all built in.
So there's a... If the town were to bond this based on the information that's in the feasibility study, there is a cash positive result from energy creation on the bond payback. And that includes a portion of the... I'll say profits because it's actually savings on energy, but a portion of the net positive that is considered to be put aside for long-term maintenance.
Okay. We'll talk about this. I have too many questions running through my head right now. I mean, it would bore the tears out of all of you. We would just talk power.
And you can probably get a lot of the information online. Or, like I said, I expect to hear from the chairman now. But, you know, it may be helpful to attend one of their meetings, you know, and ask to be put on the agenda so that he can address some of your questions.
Very good. Thank you very much.
So this is Mr. Plutukas, who is chairman of the board, and he is going to come up now. If you can just give your name and address for the record, Mr. Plutukas.
Bob Plutukas, 231 Milbury Street.
Thank you.
And I really wanna thank the residents for their very thoughtful questions. And I would remind everyone that we still have one opening, sir. If someone wants to join the committee, we'd love to have you and your expertise. I think we have a communications gap here. And I think one of the things we talked about when we first started the committee was that we wanted to have meetings out in the public, at the public library, to put on presentations. Because I know that a lot of people don't like great immediate cable. And they don't have it. They don't watch these select board meetings. They have to get their information from someplace else. And trust me, we want you at our meetings. We want your questions. We need your expertise. This project can save you $2 million or more in tax dollars over the life of the project. In that case, it's 20 years. But the wind turbines that were on the hill in Princeton lasted 40 years. So we could easily double that and profit for the town. It pays for itself. It pays for everything. It pays for the little kitty of $25,000 a year to build up in case something goes wrong with it. It pays for the maintenance. It pays its own way. Everyone I talk to and talk to them to the side and mention a few of these things, they say it's a win-win situation. Why aren't we doing it? Why didn't we do it six years ago? I know why we didn't do it six years ago. We missed the non-competitive grants and that the town didn't even put in a bid for. We lost that $85,000 grant when we're talking about getting the Magna Company here. I think if we all are a little patient, when this study comes in, if it's gonna make a lot of noise, I'll sign your petition not to have it. Because I was against the one in Falmouth as soon as I heard of all the problems they had. But that was a commercial-sized wind turbine. Also, I'd correct something that was said here. There is not enough wind there just for a 950-kilowatt wind turbine. There's enough wind up there for a commercial-sized wind turbine, which would have been much larger. But SCD, the engineering company that we hired, didn't wanna impact the neighborhood as much because it's about maybe 80 feet shorter. And the ones that were in Falmouth were commercial-sized ones. The 850-kilowatt Gemessa that was chosen, there are over 4,000 of them in the world. Not a lot of problems with them. They work very well. It's a tried and true, like my Prius. It's not an experimental one. It's not new technology that hasn't been tried. So I think if we're patient, the results on noise will come through. And this is so... I've been at this longer than the committee has. Our first grant through the Massachusetts Technology Collaborative was many years ago when the UMass professors came. And Cliff Granger gave us a riding his tractor up on the property since he was in a butter. And he showed us where the markings, where the land boundaries were. The UMass professors said it was the best site they had seen for a wind turbine because it was in isolation. The land up there is mainly ledge and wet ones. I'm glad we could build a high school there. The cost of it is astronomical. So if we just have a little patience, I think it'll be great. You heard Cliff Granger, one of the previous meetings here, mention that he had lunch under a wind turbine, a commercial one, and that he didn't have to raise his voice. I welcome all of you to drive by one of the wind turbines, the same distance it is from your house. You go to... I mean, I can't give you permission to go on Holy Name's property. It's private property. But if you drive on Ballard Street, you can see it. Let your windows down, you're gonna have a hard time hearing it. I've been right underneath it, and occasionally I'd hear a little shh, shh. But 100 yards away, nothing. Remember, that one's right next to a high school. If it made a lot of noise that would disturb people, every parent at Holy Name High School would have taken their kids out. You know, they'd pay money to go to that high school. If you go down to rent them, there's one about the same size as this, it takes care of them on a story. Pull right up to the outside about 100 yards away, you can't hear a thing. You cannot hear a thing. The state of Massachusetts did a study. It's this thick. And it took every study that had been done by doctors and scientists to try to find out any health problems that came from wind turbines. They found none. Found none. You can get that off the web. So there's been all kinds of research. The second study that was done in the town of Auburn was done by the WPI students. They came and they did their study under the supervision of their professors at WPI. And they said it was an excellent site. It came up with the same results pretty much as the UMass professors did. And that this new, the third study, like you said, with the high school, you know? We couldn't build a high school. We couldn't find a site for it. If you have enough wind in the interior of the state of Massachusetts for a wind turbine, you have a precious commodity. You can't put them on every hill. You can't put them in any backyard. You have to have adequate wind.
Mr. Plutukas, just 'cause we have three people, three others waiting for licenses...
I apologize.
No, no, don't apologize. You don't have to apologize. Do you have information on your next scheduled meeting or when your meetings are regularly held?
Well, we were waiting for the town government to come out with their policy as Mr. Simone had asked for. And after that, we were gonna have a meeting.
So you have nothing scheduled at this point?
No, but we'd love to have one. And I was gonna make a suggestion on that. If you get every resident's email address, let's let them through email. Let them know when the meetings are. Let them come in. We're not hiding anything.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that that falls under...
Well, I'm only saying that's how far I would go.
Yeah.
I'd make it that open.
I think as we finish this up, as I speak with the residents, if there's people who'd like to be notified, I'll get their information.
Okay. Right, right. But notification of a public meeting isn't meet the requirements if we do it by email. So you can come up. You have to come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi. My name's Patty Leach, and I live on Coachman Lane also. And I guess my question after listening to all of this is that there seems to be some question as to actually where this is. Is it on Prospect Street South? Or is it on... Or is it on Prospect Street or is it on Oxford Street South? Where exactly is it going to be?
About halfway between the two. On top of Granger Cliffs. There's some town-owned property in the rear of the Home Depot and the BJ's.
So it's going to be like if I'm looking in BJ's parking lot, it'll be in the land that is between Home Depot's here, BJ's here, and then there's land out that way?
That is correct.
Is that where it's gonna be?
That is correct.
So it actually is gonna be midpoint between Prospect Street and Oxford Street South?
Correct.
On a hill?
Correct.
Thank you.
And to further... If you go over to Kelly Street, you could see where the tower is still. And that's just about where they would put it.
I'm sorry.
If you go to Kelly Street...
Yeah, I know where Kelly Street is.
And you look across the Krasowski's Field, which is like 1,000 yards, you'll see it way in the woods, a tower. That's approximately where it would be. So it's... I mean, it's way out in the hicks, away from everything.
Thank you. Did you have anything to wrap up?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Simonean?
I just wanna clarify. It wasn't necessarily a policy of any sort that I had asked for. We heard from SCD and we've heard from other residents. And I was looking for something from the Alternative Energy Committee or the town to... In regard to this project. So anything that could actually help to prevent this kind of information gap or, you know, that there seems to be. So that was all. That was all. What I had asked for about a month ago was just that we have, you know, that additional information. I know it's on the website. I know everybody isn't, you know, maybe internet savvy or doesn't understand it's there. But just whatever we can do to get some of that information out as much as possible, that's my... If it is, you know, trying to get folks to your meeting, and you said you have one open position, so maybe you can fill that. But I just wanna... I also wanna... In your statement, you made one other comment. You said that nobody watches the select board meetings. So I'm gonna tell you. I choose to believe that every Auburn resident is chomping at the bit to rush home and watch these meetings.
They'd miss the Red Sox, the end of the Red Sox game to come here.
Just to watch. That's right.
I don't know if I can answer any other questions.
No. I think it would be... You know, I think I'd like to move forward with getting the residency information they need, and then they're welcome to come back here. I hope you find the information that you're looking for. If you don't, please contact us again, and we're happy to facilitate that.
And please come to our meetings.
Yes.
They're posted and they're open.
Thank you. The next item, we have a Board of Selectmen item, send to General Items. I need to make sure they move out. Can you just make sure they move out, please? We have a transient vendor license loop to go at the Auburn Mall. Enclosed are the application documents and documents from the DCG concerning the application. Is there anyone here for that application? If you could come up and give your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Sure. My name is Leo Karkoulis. I'm from Tewksbury, Massachusetts. And our business is mobile oil change and steam cow washing. So what we do is we have a location, let's say, in the mall, in the garage area of the mall. Customer comes up, we do a mobile oil change for them or steam cow wash their interior, We have a location at the Solomon Bar Mall. Now it's actually running right now, so it's...
Did you say it's indoors?
Outdoors.
Outdoors.
Outdoor.
Okay. So... And I Googled it. Can you, for the board, just tell us a little bit about like how this happens? Does it happen directly on the pavement?
We have a truck that's self-contained. It has an oil tank that siphons the oil from the dipstick of the car, goes into our tanks. And we have tanks that have the oil that replenish the oil, the new oil into your car. So it's kind of a new system that we have. Instead of like a jiffy lube where you drain the oil, we siphon it out from the top. So it's all self-contained. It's all protected. There's no chance of spillage or anything like that.
And where will this be set up?
In the garage area of the Auburn Mall. I don't know exactly where.
Okay. Yes?
I worked for about 12 years in evenings and security at Auburn Mall. And there is no garage area, so I'd like to know where they're planning to put it.
The only garage area we're familiar with is Sears.
Is there parking, a parking lot?
But that's not a garage.
I meant a parking lot. I'm sorry.
Okay.
A parking lot.
It's in the parking lot.
Right. In the parking lot.
So... First of all, do members have questions? Mr. Hallstrom, 'cause I have lots.
I'm not familiar with what you're offering here. The information we have in front of us does not spell out much of what your operation is. And I had gone past 385 South Street many, many times. And I was looking to see if there was some sort of a building, some sort of a structure or something you were gonna put this into. But I'm not familiar, so maybe you can explain a little bit about what your operation is.
Well, we're not gonna have a structure. It's a van. We have a van where it has all the equipment inside the van for oil change. It's a new system, so there's really nothing to really compare it to. There is no company that does this right now. We're the first ones in the state to do this. So what it is, is let's say you'd want an oil change. You come to our services. We'd have, let's say, five or six assigned spots in the parking lot, not interior, exterior. And you would come in, you'd pull up your car, give us your keys. We'd change your oil, you know, while you shop or do whatever you're gonna do or if you wanna wait. And pretty much that's the system. It's instead of going like a jiffy lube, we do it mobile. So we can go to actually your location. We can go to your house. We can go to different places and do oil changes and cow washes.
Just as a follow-up, in the area that you wanna put this, and one of the things that they mentioned to us through the DCG is to obtain... that they had mentioned to us through the DCG is to obtain an Equifer special permit. That's all water down there. And it sounds like a car wash and oil, that's fluids. I can see a spill. I can see what kind of...
Well, the, the car wash itself is we use, we use a unique system. It's a steam car wash. So compared to like a regular car wash or a power washer, they use five gallons of water for every car wash. We use less than a gallon. So as far as water, there's no, there's no water. It's all steam that comes out. We also, if the board wanted, we could do a containment mat which would collect the water. And you'd have no, but the, you know, if you saw the system, there's really no water. It's all steam.
Well, it sounds like you're, you're looking, we could put it in a containment mat or something to collect whatever fluids. I'm not sure. I'm not really comfortable with what this is because I have very, very little information on what this is, and I've never seen them before. So I...
It doesn't exist. That's...
Very uncomfortable with, you know, going forward with this until I get some more information.
So do you, do you have an agreement with the mall? Do you have a signed agreement as to, to leasing a space and where the location would be? I mean, I would assume that you've, you've entered into negotiations with them.
We've talked with Simon Mall in Solomon and Paul Mall. I guess they manage this mall also.
That's correct.
We would have a signed agreement with them on where we would be and, and how we would do it. And what they would want as, as far as containment mats and things like that.
So I, so I guess there's a couple of concerns there. It wouldn't be so much what they want. It would be what the town would require for containment mats. You do have to go before the zoning board of appeals. Are you on their agenda?
I do not know.
Okay. I just, you know, I thought we'd have a little bit more information tonight as to the location at the mall, you know, some type of agreement that we could see that you have with the mall to do this. And a little bit more information. It was my understanding when I first heard about this that, that you would be doing the car wash and not the oil changes. And now the focus tonight seems to be on the oil changes and not the car wash.
Well, the person who was supposed to be here is out of the country. So that's why I was just filling in. I'm one of the franchisee owners, so I'm not actually going to be at this location. That's why I don't know that much about, you know, the Auburn Mall.
You know, we can, we can, we can...
And I don't want to keep it, you know, just say whatever I'm going to do.
Yeah.
You know, I agree. We want to do the right thing. We're not trying to...
So we can, we can continue this to another meeting when someone who can, who has more information can be here. And also, we would like to see something from the mall.
Mall.
I don't know how board members feel about that, but I just, I agree, we don't have enough information tonight. Or if you wanted us to take a vote, I mean, I've, you know, you've heard from me and you've heard from another member who have some concerns, and it would be difficult supporting this tonight. Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we hold on to this indefinitely till we get some more information. The powers that be of the company approach the planning board, and approach the zoning board of appeals, get some answers, get some discussion going, and get us some more information about exactly what's going on. Because as I see it right now, three pieces of paper, I'm not comfortable with voting on anything and putting that forward until such time.
So is, before you make that motion... To hold it indefinitely, Mr. Holstrom, I would have a concern that this board may just need to take action on a license request. And if, you know, I have to look into it, but if we don't take action on a license request, and they may get it by default. I've seen it happen with other... So maybe put it time-specific, you know, our, our meeting after the next.
Okay. What is our next meeting after the next?
Twenty...
Be the 28th. That'll be the night before town meeting and...
I'm saying the first, maybe the first meeting in November. Give them an opportunity to get information.
Make a motion, we...
Continue it till...
We're going to vote, continue this until the first meeting in November.
And that's, so it'd be, it would actually be another Tuesday meeting because it, the November 11th is Veterans Day.
Yeah.
So we could continue it until November 12th.
And also in that, just to be sure, we have it on the record that he approached the planning board and zoning board of appeals, and so they know what's going on also because it doesn't appear that, that has happened as yet.
And I, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
So if this motion passes, I know that someone else has been communicating with the manager and the selectmen's office. Just, you know, tell them to, to contact the office and, and find out what additional information we need. But certainly, we don't have enough information to take action on this tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Simoneon?
Just one. Without divulging anything, it's proprietary since you said this system doesn't exist. Is it possible to just also present, do you have some sort of schematic that is just a basic how it, how it works type of thing?
We do, we do have a webpage. It shows the exact system, how it works and, and things like that, so.
Even, even a printout from your website?
Yeah, we, we can do that.
That you bring here would be great information.
We can do that. We can show you the actual tanks that, that we use to do the system.
And we would need something from the mall that, that indicates that, that you're authorized to set up. And, and we would want to know where at the mall because we...
Well, the only thing with the, with the mall is we can't really go forward with the mall without knowing that we're going to get approved by the town, so.
Well, I'm not saying a formal agreement, just that, that, you know, you're in discussions with leasing a space. Where, where the space would be is the, this board's concern, and how many parking spaces. And I'm not sure. We would have to check with the planning department to see. I mean, there's so much parking at the mall, but I would still feel comfortable, feel better if we asked the planning department. If you were to lose X number of spaces in this area, are they still in compliance with their site plan? So we just, we just need some more information as to where the setup will be, how many parking spaces will be lost in this setup. And just that the, the mall acknowledges that they're entering into agreement, into a contract negotiations with you to lease an outdoor space.
Okay.
I'll make that part of my motion.
Thank you. Ms...
If you, if you stated this previously, I apologize, but I don't think I heard. Is this something you plan on doing every day or is it...
We'd probably do it every day from a nine to five type operation. You know, we don't want to go all, all night.
I wasn't sure if it was going to be just a weekend's only, so.
No, it'd be, it'd be an everyday operation. I mean, we do, like I said, we do have an operation that's up and running in the Solomon and Paul Mall. The same type of, you know, same type of idea that, that we have a few parking spots. You know, we use them daily. You know, at night, people use them when they come there at night. So we're really not taking up the parking spots. You know, if somebody needs a parking spot, we're not going to say, listen, you can't park there. But, you know, if we're doing a car, if we're, if we're changing the oil on one, yeah, we're going to take up a spot or two. And hopefully, we take up more spots and it's busy and it's good for the mall, it's good for the town, so.
All right, thank you. So motion is to continue to the 12th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is Best Buy Mobile Secondhand License at 385 Southridge Street. Enclosed, we have the applicant's documents, comments from DCG, and police department. Is there someone here? Good evening. If you could give your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about why you're here tonight.
Absolutely. My name is Kevin Austin. I'm the general manager of the Best Buy Mobile in Auburn Mall. Basically, what we're looking for is to obtain a trade-in license, or I believe it's called the junk license in the town. What we do in Best Buy Mobile, we do not give out cash for any traded-in cell phones or tablets. We simply use store credit. I know there's a number of establishments in the mall already that do the same type of business. There's at least three that I know of that already have the permission to do so. So we're just trying to compete with them and be competitive in nature. Best Buy does have all the proper provisions in place and requirements as far as I know the town, the town requires. We currently do this type of deal already in over 1,000 locations nationwide at Best Buy. Couple of things we do have that's a little bit different than some of the competition is we do have fail safes in place to make sure the device does actually belong to the person giving it in. So I know if somebody walks into some of the other competitors with a cell phone, they can simply trade it in. There's no way of verifying anything other than taking their ID and having the agreements. With Best Buy, we have the capability of making sure that phone number or that phone is not currently on a contract or currently being used by anybody. So that's another failsafe that we have that some of the competition doesn't have as well. So we're just kind of looking to get that license so we can be a little bit more competitive in the mall and just kind of the status quo with the rest of the Best Buys in the area.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions?
Are you familiar with the bullet points that the DCG has made?
Yes, I met with the DCG. I'm familiar with everything else required. The company has already stated they do that in numerous areas already. Red Street, Millbury requires the same type of things. They have that establishment in place as well. The company is prepared to comply with all of them.
Through the chair, there's been a lot in the media lately that telephones have been stolen and have you run into any problems with your business that you've collected any of these stolen phones or had any question on any of the materials you received?
Yeah, I've worked for Best Buy for the past five years in a couple of different locations. In Middletown, Rhode Island, I've worked in Millbury as well, as well as now I'm the manager of Auburn. In Auburn, we haven't had any issues simply because we can't do trade-ins unless they had purchased the device initially from Best Buy. So they have to have all the proper, proper documentation stating that we have to locate their receipt. They have to have an ID. They have to be 18 years or older. They sign a legal document stating that they were the owner of the device, and they know that we're going to be doing background checks and stuff like that as well. In my five-year history at Best Buy, I haven't seen any issues where there's been any fraudulent activity because of the fail safes we have in place that require certain things to be done. In the event, in locations that aren't like the Auburn location where anybody can trade in anywhere like in Millbury, they do follow procedures where the item is held for a set number of days depending on the specific town requirements. It's held in that location while background checks are being done before actually shipping it away to our licensing department, so.
Thank you.
Did you say you don't give any cash? That it's all store credit?
No, there's no cash. It is all store credit. So to be honest, most of the times anybody does this is simply they're trading in their old phone to help pay for their new device they're getting. I would say probably eight out of 10 customers, that's what the case is. They're just simply just helping pay for their new upgrade. Like I said, two other things, I'm not sure if you have all the same documents. I know corporate sent a lot of stuff over. It hasn't been from me directly. Like I said, we cooperate with local law enforcement agencies investigating theft. Seller must be at least 18 years of age. We do require a government-issued photo ID with the seller's identity on there. We do maintain electronic records for every single transactions, which includes a description of the manufacturer, model, serial number, and any personalization. So if they had any engraving or anything on that, we keep records of that as well. Seller's information contained on the government-issued ID, including name, address, phone number, date of birth, ID type, issuer, number, expiration, everything, the amount that we give them. All transactions are timed, dated, and stamped. And each individual employee that does a trade-in is also kept. So if there's an issue where maybe there's one employee doing some, you know, fraudulent activity, we're also able to record who actually did the trade-in at the time to cooperate with law enforcement.
Are there any other questions? So, so I'm looking at this application, and it's, the DC recommendation is to retain the items for 14 days minimum. Our policy, I believe, is 30 days in our new secondhand license policy. So the, but the, listening to the applicant, they, they appear to have a different operation where they're not offering cash and there are other checks in place. I mean, what, what, Mr. Bernie?
Unfortunately, the chief has left this evening, but that recommendation actually came directly from Chief's Lucas. We had a conversation. His feeling was that the nature of the items being sold and the fact that they are not giving cash, 14 days was reasonable as opposed to something like gold that may take a bit longer to track down and may have more value and is, is easily disposed of. He felt that 14 was reasonable based on it, both it being corporate and the nature of the, the trade-in. So that, that's where that recommendation came from.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
To be honest, either way, the company is prepared to abide to either. We have the capabilities of doing that, so.
Yeah, and it certainly does sound like a much different operation than, you know, offering cash for items on the spot. Mr. Simoneon, did you?
No, no, no.
Oh, I thought... Is there anyone else here on this item? Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the license, provide all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of the departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Fairly comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void under the conditions recommended by the Development Coordinating Group, the DCG.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We had no member items submitted. Are there any member items under public comment? I'll go back and ask Mr. Grossman. Mr. Simoneon?
I could wait to vote, but I, I think that this weekend, I know is, is, all weekend long, there are several events surrounding the dedication of the Grotto Memorial.
Grotto Memorial, yeah.
Thought I'd throw that out there one more time in case anyone missed that memo.
Yeah.
I believe Friday night at the football game, there's presentation. Saturday is the dedication memorial and then...
And Sunday is the run.
Sunday is the actual road race, so.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Grossman, did you have a member item? We had moved on. Did you have anything? Okay, thank you. Moving on, town manager items, vote to authorize or accept the Massachusetts Cultural Council grant in the amount of $500.
Through the chair, this is a grant that we applied for. There's no match that is required. And this is on behalf of the Senior Center. The actual grant would be used to fund our annual concert that's held up at the Senior Center in the summer. It's held out by the gazebo. It's a nice event, and this would provide the funding to do that.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the, and accept the Massachusetts Cultural Council grant in the amount of $500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The next item is the Board and Commission Annual Training. Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you. Just wanted to make a note that three, when I began almost three years ago, we instituted a new annual Board and Commission training for existing members as well as for new members. It is offered every year in November. It's for, again, for new members as well as existing members. Regulations change and laws sometimes change, and sometimes there are questions that come up during the year from board members. So this is an opportunity for any Board or Commission member to come to the training. It starts at 6:00 PM. It's generally over in an hour and a half, so by 7:30. And Attorney Bob Henigan, who's town council, provides the training. He goes over things like Robert's Rules, open meeting law, any changes or opinions from the Attorney General's Office that may affect the day-to-day business of the boards and commissions. And this is a really good opportunity. Again, it's for Board and Commission members to ask questions. Town council is there. He's willing to answer questions. They come up every year about fundraising and what you can do and what you can't do. And we just like to make this available as we can every year for the members. We get a mix of people. We get both new members and existing members. It's really, it is optional for existing members, but highly encouraged for everyone to attend. So I just want to let you know that, that is back on again and...
And is that in this room?
It is held in this room.
Thursday, November 14th?
Thursday, the 14th at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. In the selectmen's room. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, there are no tabled items. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we have the minutes of February 25th, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions? The chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass. Journal of laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to deliberate upon matters which, if done in open meeting, could detrimentally affect the town, the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to non-union contract negotiations, come out of executive session only to adjourn.
This is a...
The motion and second would be followed by a roll call vote.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes.
Mr. Simoneon?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And that was a roll call.[1747.45]